This meeting. We're gonna start with the invocation.
Good Lord, we just thank you for this day. Good Lord, we just thank you for this day. We just thank you for the opportunity to come here and do this. You bless what we do. You bless what we do. It is for the betterment of our community. In your name, amen. Amen.
Stand for their pledges. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, to the republic, our which is one nation, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all, justice for all. Under the text of law, to the allegiance, to the allegiance, to you. One state, one God, under God, one in his name.
Has everybody had time to go over the minutes? Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Make motion, make a statement.
There's a motion? There's a motion? There's a second? There's a second? All in favor? All in favor? Any objections? Any objections? Motion carries. Motion carries. Alright, we're gonna open. Alright, we're gonna open. Case file number twenty twenty-five dash zero four dash V. Remove from the ta- remove from the table to open a public hearing to consider approval of the request to consider Christopher Tetley owner for a variance from section fourteen dash seven dash seven of the city of Odessa zoning ordinance to allow a structured carport to be built at zero feet side yard setback instead of required fifteen side yard setback in a single family SF dash three zoning district lot fifty-six block seven north park addition ninth filing six ten east ninety-fifth street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the site is currently zoned single-family three and is occupied by a single-family residence. Uh, the applicant Christopher Tetley owner initially requested a three hundred and seventy-eight square foot, a fourteen by twenty-seven carport with a zero-foot side yard setback. However, he has updated the request uh for a carport with the following specifications. The applicant is now requesting a variance to allow the construction of a two hundred and seventy-six square foot, that's ten foot six inches by twenty-seven uh feet, sorry, uh, carport to be built with a two-foot side yard setback instead of the required five-foot side yard setback. Uh, should the board choose to approve the request, the planning staff would recommend the adoption with the following conditions. And that no other structures or additions may be placed within the five-foot set uh side yard setback, that the carport shall not be enclosed in the future, and that no additional structures, additions, or modifications may be made to the carport, uh, that the eve of the carport shall be kept entirely within the property line to avoid water runoff onto adjacent property, that the carport be attached to the main residence, and that it shall meet building code requirements and obtain a permit from the building inspections department. With that, I'm here if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions for city staff?
I'm gonna need some clarification on the dimensions, so I don't know if it's okay to ask staff or just have the-
Uh, it might be best to ask the applicant um for the clarification on the dimensions because I do see that there's a bit of a discrepancy. Is it okay to open a public hearing?
Any other questions for staff? No? Thank you. At this moment, we're gonna open the meeting to the public. Anybody who wants to speak for or against, please step forward. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Chris Tetley, six ten east ninety-fifth street.
Do we have any?
Yeah, just clarify, uh, seems there may be some discrepancies uh from the plan view dimensions and the elevation view. I see on the plan view, uh, the proposed carport's ten foot six inches, two feet from the fence. Uh, in the elevation view, those dimensions aren't enough, so I don't know if that's just the old one or-
Yeah, that's from the old first design.
Okay, so that's no longer, that no longer applies?
It'd still be looking the same, but it's, I just trimmed the fat off to-
I mean, the dimensions no longer apply because those aren't accurate based on the revision.
Correct.
On this page?
Yeah, on this page. Yeah, you add those up, it doesn't equal ten six.
Right.
Um, so there's a discrepancy between the two. How much, how much space would be between the carport and the house?
Um, about three feet because of the air conditioner. Which, it won't be attached to the house.
Yeah, it seems there's gonna be about a two and a half foot gap.
And then ten six and then two foot from the outside of the carport to the fence line?
Yes, sir.
Cause I get fifteen six.
It'll go over the air conditioner just a little bit.
Oh, the roof line will?
Yeah, well, there's no overhang, it'll just come over so I can pull right up next to it. So there'll be about that much over the air conditioner.
Oh, I got you. Cause it is carport.
You have any questions?
The main thing was coming away from the fence.
Is this a measurements lineup to you?
Uh, in the, in the plan view, uh, yeah, I mean, two feet from the fence, ten foot six inches carport, that leaves you about two and a half if the house is truly the fifteen feet. So it's gonna be ten to three.
The brick is fifteen, but I don't know if overhang counts on the house, so it's really fourteen if the overhang counts. But from brick, the original house to the fence is fifteen.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to speak for or against this variance, please step forward. Okay, at this moment, we're gonna close this section of the meeting in the public. Uh, commissioners?
Can I make a statement?
Yes.
So, on the conditions for this uh, for this variance, there is a added condition where we indicate that the carport be attached to the main residence. If he's planning not to attach it, then uh, depending on your uh decision, if you're going to approve this, then I would recommend to um, remove that number four condition. However, it's, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
So, um, I was gonna ask you about that, so I'm glad you brought that up. So, staff's recommendation if this was to be approved would be to actually move that over, that two and a half feet or so, to get it up against the house, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Uh, so I think-
In, what I understood from his request is that it's a carport, so it's open.
Right.
Um, the only thing that's gonna be attached would be uh, the, the roof line, the, to, to the house. But I'm not sure, um, the way we received it was a carport, um, I'm not sure if it's gonna be enclosed. Did you mention it anytime?
It's not.
It's not, okay.
Um, I just wanted to state that, so, planning and zoning requires a se- six-foot separation from the, the eve to the eve. Permitting for the I, the international building code doesn't really care about that, but they do care about the fence and the um, eve of having a two-foot separation. So, that's where you guys kinda have to think about which one's more important if you are going to allow it. Do we comply with the six foot or the two foot based on the international building code? Or the other solution is, I don't know if you can connect, uh, connect it with the roof line, so therefore it can meet both. Then it can have the two-foot separation and it's just connected to the roof line. So then maybe the six-foot separation would not matter.
On the other side?
Yes. I don't know if that's something he can do.
I mean, hold on. Okay, any other questions? We could open it back to the public. Okay, let's open this section of the meeting back to the public. Anybody who wants to step forward, sir? Please state your name.
I could, but it's just not very aesthetically pleasing to have a lien too coming on.
I was just trying to match the pinks of the house and make it look good.
Do we have any questions for? Thank you, sir. Alright, we're gonna close this section of the meeting. Commissioners? Discussion, ocean? How many times has this case been come, came forward? Three times? So we have a question, do we, which, once do we comply for uh, six foot, two foot, or attached to the house, or deny the variance? That's some, that's what we had to discuss today. We've, um, these came up three times, so I feel that we should have a decision today.
From the outside, this will look like, you know, it belongs there, right? But it's just the two foot on the side that's the issue, correct? That's moving it well within what, what is supposed to be the setback on the side.
Yes, and then the, the six foot on, against the house. So do we comply with the six foot, do we comply with the two foot, or?
So what's the significance of the six foot?
Maria, can you?
According to the ordinance, uh, there, whenever you have a accessory or structure, um, on the property, it has to maintain a six-foot separation from any other structure.
Is that the, a city ordinance, or is that like a?
Planning ordinance.
Yeah, it's a planning ordinance, mhm.
Commissioners?
Is that a fire issue or just um? Just a-
It's an or, it was a, a ordinance that was adopted by the city of Odessa zoning ordinance. Um, it's, it's stated in our ordinance, um, our zoning book, um, that it's, it is a requirement. And-
And if I may, Gary Owens, building official, the two foot is now the building code. Side yard projection can never get any closer than two foot to a property line.
Any closer than two feet?
That's straight out of the building code.
And that would be on the carport side?
Yes.
What about next to the house?
Next to the house, then this, I don't have a problem. And the code, you know, I can get in next to the house, I can be a little separated, you know, that's not an ordinance, I mean, that's not a code. My code talks about causing a side yard projection from a structure. I can never get closer than two foot to a property line, unless it's a zero clearance property, you know, which-
Is that something? Okay, I'll answer my own question.
So I, I'm, I'm, that, that answered my question too, so with the two-foot clearance, I'm okay with the six foot, it's like irrelevant, so I'm, let's just allow them to have that, have that space between the two structures.
But also, uh, we're about to rule on this, um, we also gotta make sure that we're not setting the president's for, for future.
We are, because these, these lots are all small and narrow out there and I-
And that's, and that's something we have to consider. I mean, I know there, there's a hardship and I know that we have to, um, I mean, I know there's a hardship and that's what we're here to look for. Uh, I, I mean, whichever way you decide to go, I'm okay with, it's just, we, we also gotta remember.
But what's the hardship?
I forgot, uh-
The size of the lots?
The hardship, I think it was, Mr. Tetley? Oh, the hardship. Do you have the letter of the hardship, Maria? I think it was, it's something like it was a hail damage.
I guess the question would be if, I mean-
Can we just read it too, also we gotta have it?
He indicated that truck will not fit in garage and I would like to protect it from sun damage and hailstorms.
Commissioners?
It is a precedent because the area. But I guess the question is, are we comfortable with everybody getting two foot when they come in here to, you know?
I prefer not to set the precedent. I mean, even if you move it and butt it up against the house, I don't know if that's really a practical solution because the AC unit's there. So, I mean, otherwise, that would be my preferred option, but I don't know how practical that is because the AC.
Yeah.
Okay, let me call Mr. Tetley back up, um, who wants to say something, Mr. Tetley? We're gonna open it again. Please state your name for the record.
Chris Tetley. Um, there's only a few blocks of DR Horton's out there and the rest are all beaten mows, so there's not many houses with fifteen feet. Like maybe thirty houses. The rest have five. So, not everybody can do this. If that's one of your questions.
Alright, thank you. No further.
Thank you.
We're closing it from the public. Um, commissioners?
I, I understand the nature of the neighborhood and it is tight, you know, and for-
Can you have the aerial?
For vehicles to be, you know, parked in the street, um, neighbors, you're approaching on one on top of the other, and so he's just utilizing his property for, you know-
Does he have an alley?
He does.
Yes, I know.
The option is he could go through the alley.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, in this case, um, there is an alley, you know, not all these developments have alleys anymore, so there is that option, access through the alley.
Alright. Can we ask him another question?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. For the record, we're opening it back to the public.
Is there an option to do it in the alley? Cause obviously you see we're struggling with this, right?
I understand, um-
And we're trying to, but we're not getting there and I just want to-
It's just not convenient to go to the alley, open a gate, you know, when you're using the vehicle every day, you just wanna pull in like you would to the front of the house.
Yeah.
And I believe there was a, a variant in your driveway to open up that up as well?
Yes.
Had that already been done, is that the work already been placed to have that?
Yeah, and then they approved the curb cut, so. It's a very narrow alley too. My crowd's big and it, ten-point turns and stuff.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Alright, thanks.
Can we see the pictures of the front of the house? Alright, commissioners? What do you all think? Kyle?
I mean, I, I prefer not to set that kind of precedent, um, like I said, I, I'd, if anything, butt it up against the house, but then understand that AC unit's there, so I don't know if that's really practical to do that, so.
So is there a motion or is there?
I'll make a motion that we denied as presented.
There's a motion on the table for denial? Do I have a second?
I'll say.
There's a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion is denied.
No objections, go ahead.
No objections. Alright, we're gonna go to case file number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen dash V, open a public hearing to consider approval of the request of Guillermo Perez owner for a variance from section fourteen dash seven dash HD of the city of Odessa zoning ordinance to allow structured garage to be built with a three-foot side yard setback instead of required fifteen feet yard setback. From section fourteen dash seven dash eight in the special dwelling district SPD zoning district lot sixteen block third, three Legato Estates for filing thirty-nine hundred Oporto Street.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the applicant is TJ Ward and Guillermo Perez, uh, and the purpose of the request is to obtain a variance to allow four hundred and eighty square foot garage to be placed with a uh, three-foot side yard setback instead of the required fifteen-foot side yard setback from section fourteen dash seven dash eight subsection D of the city of Odessa zoning ordinance. Uh, staff analysis of the request is that the variance is contrary to the public interest for several reasons. The applicant's request to reduce the side yard setback to three feet instead of the required fifteen would create precedence for surrounding properties to follow. Second, the fence on the east elevation facing Oporto has a gate access to the rear yard, the proposed structure would block access to the rear of the property. And third, minimizing the side yard places the structure closer to the street and may prevent visibility for traffic, uh, traffics traveling southbound on Park's Legato. Uh, should the board choose to approve the request, planning staff would recommend adoption with the following conditions. Uh, that no other structures or additions may be placed within the three-feet side yard setback adjacent to the street, that the garage maintain a six-foot separation from any other structure, that the garage eve shall be maintained with the property in order, or within the property in order to avoid, excuse me, uh, water runoff into the right-of-way, and that it shall meet building code requirements and obtain a permit from the building inspections department. And with that, we're here for any questions.
Do you have any questions for?
So- I've got some questions on dimensions. I mean, I see a lot of dimensions here. I see a twenty-four, I see what looks to be a five, maybe twelve feet, then I see a twenty-three point, twenty-three feet, five inches, I see a ten there. What? And, and, but then the, the request is to have a three, what side yard setback, so I guess I'm just not understanding what's, what are we even looking at here? Like what's really the dimensions?
This location requires a fifteen-foot side yard setback adjacent to the street. Um, they are wanting to place the structure, um, three feet from the property line. Uh, they are wanting to, um, extend towards the back if, go ahead and put the picture with the houses. Okay, so, that's not the one, that one. So, if you see behind that white truck, there is a gate, um, that it opens and closes. Now, when I looked at the hat, there is no curb cut, however, something like that would not be allowed because it's closer to, uh, Legato Drive. However, they're planning on placing, excuse me, they're planning on placing the, uh, carport or the structure, uh, inside the property towards the back. I did, uh, contact Mr. Ward, who is from Planet Construction, he's the one that's proposing to build that. Um, I indicated that I needed the measurements from the gate to the inside of the, to the structure. Um, once we open the public hearing, we can hear more information from him.
So are you saying there's not a curb cut, so is this gonna be entrance from the front of the house?
He is, uh, that's what I'm thinking he's proposing. I did ask him though, um, because I see that, um, driveway there, that cement already on, on the ground.
Mhm.
Um, he indicated that the entrance would be from the back.
From the back?
Mhm.
Okay. Any other questions for? Any other questions for staff? No?
No, sir.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Prieto. At this moment, we're gonna open the section of the meeting to the public. Anybody who wants to speak for or against the variance, please step forward. Maybe you could state your name and address for the record?
Uh, April Ward, Planet Construction, sixty-one eleven North Dixie in Odessa. And, um, what I was gonna explain on the, your question about the measurements where it has twenty-four feet and twenty-three and a half where it shows difference is that the, um, the house is a little bit, uh, you know, a difference from the property line, so it's like a little curved, I guess you could say. Does, does that help? So at the, we get, at the front, it shows twenty-four feet, in the back, it's twenty-three and a half, so it is a little, little off on the measurement there. That, that would be why. So it's not a straight line on the house, I guess.
Yeah, the house isn't-
Yeah, just a little bit of an angle.
Squared.
Yeah, not completely squared there.
Well, six inch, oh, I mean, that's not-
Right, right, so that would be the difference.
So on the back where they're wanting to put this is about twenty-three and a half feet-
Yes.
From the house to the fence?
Yes, to the fence, uh-huh.
And they're asking for twelve by forty?
Yes, sir.
Is it a carport?
It's a garage.
A garage, four foot approach to the garage?
Yes, sir. And if I may say, um, to, uh, what they spoke on about, uh, this would create a precedence, there is already a precedence, and if you go down, um, the drive there, um, I'm sorry, what is the name of that street? I apologize. Uh, down Parks Legato, uh, no, Trace Hermanis Boulevard? If you are to travel down that, there are already several buildings that are within these same measurements that we are requesting to build, one of which we built, um, I wanna say probably eight years ago directly across the street from this, this home. So it is already a precedence in, in the neighborhood, uh, as well as, uh, we are still well within the sight plan, you know, the sight line. If someone were to come to the stop sign there, you're well within the stop, the sight because the fence is gonna come up way past, uh, where the building would come up, and, and the fence is a very tall, uh, fence to say, um, that it would, you know, you could see there, that it is going to, uh, it would obstruct the, uh, view before a building would, that is still set within another four feet of, of the property line. I'm sorry, three feet. I don't know if we, is there an aerial view there that you could show the other buildings? Uh, the, the building directly across the street from this, the house directly across the street from this, is where you would see those same setbacks, and then the one that we did not build, but that is there, you can see that building kind of towards the back of that one. Um, the, the property, uh, directly behind that already has a building at those setbacks that we were requesting.
Yeah. And, and some, you know, I understand there may be a structure there, but does anybody know was it really permitted or did you just do it, you know?
Oh, no, we did permit, uh, the one that is directly across the street. Uh-huh, yes, about eight years ago, which we did try to pull the plans, uh, from the city, um, they've changed their system twice since then, so the archive, I guess, is not available, but-
The one that you pulled, uh, eight years ago, did you have to do a variance?
No, we did not.
So it was-
So there's a difference.
There's a difference.
They said it is not, that it is the same setbacks.
Okay, uh, if I may, um-
Okay, hold on. Do we have any other questions for?
I, I'm still trying to understand, I, I, I see the requests for a three-foot side, but if I'm hearing- side, but if I'm hearing, at the back of the house, it's about twenty-three, uh, feet, six inches or so, and this is a twelve by forty? How, how close are we really getting this to the, the side then? If we have twenty-three feet to work with, and it's twelve?
Right, it's, it's twelve, and then the six that we have to stay off of the, from the house. So we're gonna be at eighteen at that point? So it's actually more like five? Five and a half, I guess?
Okay, that's where my confusion was.
Right.
That doesn't add enough to three.
Right. Yeah, I see that, too. I was kinda wondering the same, why, why it showed that way.
So it's really almost six feet? Five and a half to six feet from the fence?
Yes.
Yes. So, cause if it's six from here, five and a half from here, we have twelve.
Yeah, six, twelve, that's eighteen.
And there's still, I believe, an eight-foot, uh, difference from the back of the sidewalk to the property line of the fence. So that's why I'm saying that the fence would become more of an obstruction for view before the, the building would.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody else wants to speak for or against?
I'm not really for it, yes, I just, a quick note here. Hold on. Detached structure on the side, you're talking three feet to the property line, that wall would have to be a firewall. I mean, it can basically done all the time on storage buildings and whatnot, that's the one to give you that information, so...
You mean between the outside of the building and the property line, or the...
That one wall. Just like if you was putting a storage building in your backyard, away from your house. You can, you can encroach on that five foot if you put a firewall there.
But it seems they may be five and a half, about five and a half feet from the s, from the fence.
I just heard you saying three feet.
Well, it, the write-up says three, but when you do the math, it's more like five and a half.
I just wanted to give you that information, so if you grant the variance and we get in there, just be sure that they...
So it's closer to the...
I think, I, I suppose them all the time, I think, you know?
But there's six foot over there, so.
Yeah, it's, it's more than three.
Yeah.
Is there? Okay, Maria? Anybody else wants to speak for or against the variance? No? Okay. We're gonna close the section of the meeting. Maria, was there any notices sent out, any re...
Yes. Um, there were... There were sixteen notices sent, uh, no returns, no approvals, no protests.
Where was the hardship? Can we see the picture of the front of the house, please?
Um, would you let me read it out?
Sure.
Okay. Um, his hardship is indicated, I need to build a garage to house and protect my vehicles. Several other houses along Park Legato, uh, road have built buildings, uh, buildings the same distance from the curb as I am requesting in, as I'm requesting, and these do not block the view from any drive, nor go beyond my property fence.
Can we get the the indications that we're to approve this, where, where they are requesting? Commissioners?
Is there six foot from the house to the, yes, there?
Yes.
Yeah, I think they're already planning that six foot setback.
Yeah, it's would be on the side.
So no park, no entry from the front?
No entry from the front. So... We have five and a half from the side yard, Park Legato. Uh, we have the six foot from the house. Quick. Maria, does it cause any visibility in hazards?
The structure or the garage itself does not cause visibility. However, that's why I recommended that no, um, access through, uh, from Oporto Street, because when you start placing vehicles there on that corner, um, it, that might impede vis, uh, visibility for the uncommon traffic from Legato Road.
Okay. All right, so there's no visibility? Do we have commissioners? But I mean, we don't know if they permitted it or not, I mean, we can't go for that. I mean, I, I technically don't have... I personally don't have a problem with it. I mean, I don't consider it to be a hardship, but, because he's already has a two-car garage. Um, but, I mean, he is five feet from the side. He's still...
Close enough for the variance.
Yeah, so he's still five, five and a half feet from the side yard setback, he's still six feet from the house. There's no visibility hardship. I mean, I, I don't have, personally, I don't have a problem with this, or approving this, or having the recommendations, adding the recommendations from the city.
With, along with approval.
With the approval, I mean, it's up to y'all, whatever.
I'm good with it, it's access from the alley. It's not directly to Trace Harmanis or Oporto, so that I might be okay with it next time.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you would like, uh, access from the alley, you can go ahead and add it as a condition, um, on your approval, if, if you would like to...
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I mean, this variance is, uh, was applied that it's gonna be accessed through the alley. And, uh, so, I mean... Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve with the city's staff recommendation in adding that access has to come from the alley.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second? Discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Same sign? No objections? Motion carries.
There's no further business.
There's no further business, so then, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion, there are second?
Second that motion.
There's a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
There you go. I'll give you this.
Yes, I'll grab it.
Okay.